Okay, can you tell if we're actually playing? Yes. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. So, welcome to make sure everybody's here, uh, is here for the right meeting. This is the Wednesday, September 3rd, 2025, regular meeting of the Durham Planning Board. First step is roll call or determination of a quorum. We have four members, so we have a quorum. Next, if you'd rise and please join me in saying a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, into this one with liberty and justice for all. Okay, do we have any amendments to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm not sure if this is gonna be covered in the, um, information exchange memo, but I'd like to discuss the, um, strategic coordination memo that George presented for the last meeting, but we didn't have a chance to discuss it. If we could possibly put that at the end of the meeting.
Uh, makes sense to me if we got, if we got time. If that was the timing of meetings and all that stuff, who's doing what. Okay, any objections? Seeing none, we'll add that to the agenda at the end of the meeting. Acceptance of meeting minutes, August 6th, 2025, our last meeting. Any changes to the minutes? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Who seconded?
I'll second.
Seconded? Seconded, any other comments? Seeing none, raise your hand if you vote yes. Unanimous, moving on, pass that. To informational exchange or non-agenda items. George, town planner.
Yes, Sam, uh, for the first time I've included my monthly report to the town manager, where I go down through all the projects that we've been working on. So, uh, rather than try to recap there a few, uh, just for future, you could just refer that report. If you have questions on any of those, uh, issues, you can email me and I'll be more than happy to answer them. So, I would just bring you up to date that on September 23rd, the select board is going to be having a meeting at which they'll be discussing economic development, trying to put together some ideas on how the town can move forward with that. Uh, and then on October 28th, the select board is going to be hearing from the consultants hired for the open space plan, so they're inviting town input, so you may not be able to participate in that discussion as well.
Yeah, I don't, do you think they'll actually take input from just people in the audience?
I think that's what they're looking for.
Oh, okay, I thought, just, just to be sure, so nobody makes a mistake.
You are official town officials, so I'm sure they would love your input, especially being on the planning board, you review a lot of development, the zoning map and all of those issues, so I'm sure they would love your input.
Can you see those dates again, second?
Yes, uh, September 23rd, regular meeting is the economy development. Uh, and our October 28th, which is the second October meeting that we will be in with open space. Kick off their call.
And if you'd rather sit at home with a beverage of your choice, it is streamed on YouTube and played again, you know, permanently. Residents, any public comment on anything that's not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, uh, non-residents? Seeing none, continuing business, we have none, new business. Okay, so conditional use review of a proposed bulky waste pickup company at 28th, Soper Road, Matt 4 Lot 97, no public comment will be taken. So, this is as good a time as any to, uh, when we get to, when we get to it. So, uh, with that, I guess, with the applicant, applicants, come on up. Please state, state your name and, um, address, relationship to the project.
Yep, Matthew Morehouse, uh, with that 1026 Hall Wall Road, and owner, joint owner of the business.
In Durham?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, I'd ask speak loudly, cause you're facing away from the only mic is the camera.
Okay.
So, I just speak a little bit, uh, louder and we should be able to pick you up.
Okay.
Alrighty, so, uh, Mr. Tabarz, if you would like to go over, uh, your notes on this project.
I'd be happy to, uh, so the applicant's here before you tonight for a conditional use review, and virtually, since the town does not have commercial districts or industrial districts, uh, business uses are allowed anywhere in the community, and per that, every, uh, business, non-residential, uh, development has to get a conditional use review, where the ordinance lays out that, uh, the board looks at several criteria primarily related to, uh, is the project going to have a significant impact on environmental, uh, quality? Is it gonna have drainage issues? Is it gonna have traffic issues? The scale and intensity of use, uh, compared to neighboring uses? So, those, um, are all set out in the ordinance and they're set out in the application that Mr. Morehouse filled out, and so, uh, you pretty much have a fairly limited review in this particular case, because as I understand it, the applicant is proposing to use existing buildings on the site as opposed to any new construction. So, uh, that will not trigger a site plan review process, which we would have if this were a new business, uh, location. Now, I would point out, I did point out in the notes that a year ago, in April, uh, another company came in, uh, an HBA AC company, this for a conditional use for the same location, and it's not clear whether that business went forward, if it's discontinued, or what the relationship is to the current applicant's project. There are multiple buildings on the property, as indicated in the applicant submissions, so the board may want to clarify what uses are currently on the property, because obviously that would potentially add to the impact and affect the ability of the ordinance findings on this conditional use application. So, I did, based on the applicant submissions, prepare draft findings of fact. Uh, I took the applicant's responses to each of those criteria questions and, and put those into the findings, the draft findings. As you proceed with the discussion tonight, when you get to a point of making a decision, you can review those and add any group of findings based on, excuse me, on testimony they've received. And, uh, also there is a, right now, a standard condition of approval, uh, that will apply to all projects like this, that basically says, everything that's discussed tonight and committed to, uh, the applicant, the testimony, that then becomes basically part of the approval if it's approved. So, finally, uh, as I indicated, the board has discretion on whether to hold a public hearing or not. You can base that on, uh, perceived public interest in the project, uh, whether we, we've not received any communications from the abudders. The applicant did submit two notification forms to a butters. Uh, they are required to notify all property owners in the dreams of the, of the project review by the planning board. So, that's where we are.
Were there more than two abudders?
I am not sure. I assume, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, uh, my business partner made, made contact with a third, there's three total, I believe. But I think there's, I don't know if they're same property owner or not, but...
Is that why there's two in the packet?
That's right, yeah.
Okay. Per landowner. Okay. But what's the requirement of sending out public notices, like?
They are required either to notify all developing property owners by certified mail, or they can take a handwritten copy and get the letting property owner's signature, which I think what they did in this case.
Okay, but within like two weeks of a meeting or?
Yes, it has to be a certain timeframe in advance, between the first 10 days.
Okay. 10 days and six.
Yes.
Okay.
But I think it's gotta be more than two or three. Just kinda looking at the picture, George, that you provided, there's one on each side, as you're driving along Soper, there's a land across the road on Soper, and there's a parcel of hunting now, as well. So, I'm thinking we, maybe we missed some. And what's the requirement, adjacent to?
Yes, and adjacent includes across the street. What's Matt's lot number? Test 3497, October 28th, Soper. 97, right?
97, yeah.
I learned today that Soper starts at Bedlam, out at, uh, 1:25.
Yeah.
And spent 30 minutes looking for it.
That was the first one, right, too?
Okay, so, to the west is Prairie Property, uh, that, apparently the owner of that property is also Prairie Properties. So, it's the property owner is one of the property letting.
Do we have to go through them to the other parts?
Steven Carpenter, 54 Soper Road. And you want to cross the road is, uh, Linda Marsdaller.
And how long behind him?
And Bruce Marsdaller. And then behind her is Rebecca Poulster. So, I think our limitation is that the property owner owns the letting, one of the letting parcels.
Yeah, just to clarify, there's, I don't know if it's two lots into the one, but we're purchasing, uh, there's two.
Yeah, so that lot, right, where we have hold of those, is what we're...
Just to clarify.
Yeah, yeah, where the red roof is. Gotcha. Yep. So, there's land, as you're facing into your property, there's land to the right. Looks to me like there's two properties across the street, George, as well as...
Yeah, it is, um, Marsdaller, but they're both Marsdaller, I think.
But different, different properties, different Marsdallers, right?
Yeah. Yep.
Could be brother or sister. And what about the wooded lot to the left, that you're driving in the property?
That's the, that's also Prairie Properties.
Uh, go farther over?
Up to that. Well, this is the project site.
Okay, so that, where the, that trailer is, is not part of it?
Correct.
So, the question is...
This is the parcel, subject parcel, so anything touching that or across the street?
So, it looks like there's five.
Yep.
Including the guy who already owns, uh, who owns both properties now with the trailer. So, I think we may be short, so if there's only two or three.
Our understanding that there was only three that abutted, uh, we didn't go, I don't think necessarily across the street, so I don't know if that was just a, only a reading of already the properties that abut.
Yeah, it does. So, we need to get a couple, some more notification out there.
And you can, if you decide to go forward with the review tonight, uh, directly applicant to notify any property owners that were not notified at this meeting.
And then?
Then continue.
Yeah, and I would also point out, I think it's only been seven days since the public notices were received by the letting landowners, so for that reason also, you should continue.
Thank you, Julia. So, the short version is, start out, you're gonna get postponed for a final decision or a decision, or maybe a final decision next month.
Okay.
Okay. There's some other concerns that I have, at least, I don't know about the other board members.
Yes.
So, uh, if you would, make sure you get, there's actually, I think, another one. There's also that one right there. Anyway, just make sure we don't need to go through all of it. Just, so you got what the requirements, right?
Um, yeah, we're missing a couple.
So, you'll have to do it again. Because you didn't do it, if it's two weeks, you only did it one week. So, the two, the three or two that you did, you're gonna have to review those. With the due date, correctly from, I turned to my expert, so. You will need to notify them, also, well, we'll get, another concern I had that we get to is, is having a public hearing, so as good, as good a time as any, don't turn to the other board members, you also have a public hearing.
I actually wonder, should we just hold on this until next month? Or do we wanna keep talking about this and then talk about it again?
You have that option.
Yeah, I almost feel like we should wait and take this up again next month.
So, I, I'd like to get, at least go through it, just to get any other issues out, so next month.
Well, what about the folks that don't know possibly about the project? Who might wanna rehash those for them?
Uh, just in terms of the notification, you know, different lawyers would advise you differently, but basically, two that have already been notified would be notified at this meeting. Now, whether they receive the proper length of time or not, they know about this meeting. This is being recorded, um, and if you continue this, they have the opportunity to watch or to ask. So, technically, they have received notice. And if that now gets extended to the next meeting, they will still have notice of the fact that this is being reviewed, and that's the issue, give people the opportunity to participate.
Right. Those are the two people that were notified, that are made.
Yes, that's correct.
Right, that's right.
My thought, in response to your comment, Julia, is that what we do tonight is go through the 200,000 different things and give him, give him, uh, feedback on it, but then, we really have to go through them individually for a vote. So, we wouldn't, we can't vote tonight on any of the seven or eight or 10, whatever the things are. So, we'd have to go back over them. And we're talking great to you, but there's a whole list of things that we have to look at and we respond to, like, does it provide a pollution problem? Does it do this, that, or the other things? So, we could go back over those, or have to go back over those and actually vote on them. Does that make sense? But we could maybe do it faster. And then, get the word out that it's already been looked at once, the information is on the website. I'm putting the applicant there, so that everybody can, can take a look at that and come in with any questions they have. And then, we would, uh, have a public hearing, does that make sense?
I'm not willing to go through the whole application for all of the points here.
Okay.
It feels like a, no, incomplete application.
Okay.
And I feel like we shouldn't, make sure we have all of the, uh, property owners notified before we forward the application.
Feel the same way?
I'm, I'm easy, I'm going away.
Okay, Zach, what we wanna do then?
Very strongly, not...
Very strongly, very strongly, very strongly. Okay, then, what I, I guess the things that I would like you to ask them to take a look at, that I, the concerns I have really to hear is, uh, a site plan is set differently, where are you gonna put everything? On the site, up against, close to, how far away from the road are you gonna do it? And then also, a, a plan to screen it. Because when I drove that today, that's just a, you can, big wide open, it kinda looks like those trees. So, those are, those are issues that I have that we'll discuss, that I'll bring up next time. Anybody else wanna give them anything you want them to think about before the next meeting? Just one of us?
My only other comment was quantity of stuff that you're being...
And I think it would help to have a site plan, nothing fancy, but take, the area or draw a line that says all the dumpsters are gonna be behind this line, and then what's gonna be on that line to screen it, is kinda what I'm getting to. And then, you know, as Bryant said, how many 10, 20, 2,000, how many trucks, all that kind of stuff. There's a little bit more detail in that regard.
Okay.
And then, give me just one second, cause I took notes, see if there's any. I just wanna make sure we don't come here next week and you're missing something else that's, as long as you're here.
There is one other comment that I have. I understand that you don't feel the, um, proof of finances is from there, because it's not like a subdivision, you're not doing a lot of construction, only installing on the side. Uh, but it would be good to see that a copy of the deed, to know that you're actually going to be buying.
Or a purchase, I'm sorry, P and S.
Thank you, George.
Just that you have the right to do this. And yeah, show us something on paper that you have the right to do this. Hey, that was one of us, yeah, BB2, thank you. Anything else?
Um, regarding the public hearing, we can talk about that next time, right? I don't, did you decide that we will, we will have a public hearing?
I think, yes, I mean, I, my recommendation is we have a public hearing, we do it next time.
You may want to vote to schedule the public hearing, as well as both table the applications, so they stay in your, you're in the line.
Okay, so I will need a motion, thank you, I will need a motion that, at, uh, to table this, and the next time, till the next meeting, which is whatever it is in October. And at that meeting, we'll hold a public hearing.
Okay, I'll make a motion to table this application.
Okay, and then also, would you add the, hold a public hearing as well?
And to hold a public hearing at the next meeting.
Uh, second? Good moved and seconded, uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote, uh, to approve or not?
And that day will be October 1st.
October 1st. So, you'll come in as continuing business and be at the front. Please let all the neighbors know. And for those of you who came tonight, we'll see you October 1st.
Okay.
You can reserve your seats in advance.
Thanks, appreciate it. Appreciate the time.
So that's it for that project, that's all, you're, you're welcome to stay. If not, we're gonna move on to, uh, the next project. Which is, uh, Gray something, or the Greystone Ridge. And I'll read you the formal verbiage for that. Sketch plan review of proposed subdivision on Pinkham Brook Road map two lots, thirty-five and forty-two. And public comment will not be taken at this meeting. So quick and, come on up. So quick and dirty, the sketch plan is a very preliminary, uh, review by the planning board. Uh, we give the applicant, uh, feedback on the viability, the, of the project, things that we might want to change. Or ask, we can't change anything, ask them to take a look at it, is a better way to say it. So it's, it is, uh, at this point, they're far from having any engineering done or anything like that. So the sketch plan you saw on the website is far more than just an artistic representation, but it's not the final, uh, final plan. So, having said that, Mr. Thebarge.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, the application we're proposing tonight, as John said, is for a sketch plan review of a thirteen lot cluster subdivision. The board looked at a prior application on this project site as well, uh, dispatched, that, this year, where the former property owner, Mr. Puffer, I think his name is, applying for, uh, a three lot private way relocating to Blue Jay Way. Uh, and so the board has already reviewed the access issues related to this project, easements, may recall. And I assume that the current applicant has purchased the property from Mr. Brock Puffer. And is proposing to go with a full subdivision, including those previously considered lots. And then extending beyond into the parcel toward the rear, which abuts the Wenzwick town, law property, uh, town line. And under main law, if you have a subdivision that abuts another municipality, you are required by law to notify. I think the planning board and the clerk of that, uh, can, so that'll probably be part of the process when it comes to including the new plan.
And we do that, right? We be the planning board, you, we slash you.
So the applicant has submitted all documentation for sketch plan, including the basic site information, our latrian survey. Uh, they've also done a concept for a cluster subdivision, and I'll switch over to those, um, those plans. So, uh, they have submitted, uh, plans and all the background documentation. That includes the, the site analysis plan, which is up on the screen right now, which shows what the, uh, site constraints are on the property. And my assessment of it are, is that there are some steep slopes over the, uh, this particular area. There's a micro pit, I guess, I'm not sure exactly what that was mine for, but there is some steep parography in this area. There's some steep, uh, land, it's a number of steep slopes over twenty-five percent there. And then there's a, what's fairly significant latrian system in the center of the parcel. Uh, and then there's a feeder, I think that is probably drain off to probably, uh, the east branch of the Chandler, I would assume, heading in that direction. Uh, so those are the major site constraints, fairly known, other than that, no significant, uh, are readily apparent. And so they are proposing to take these two existing houses on, uh, buffer parcel and create those as two of the subdivision lots. As well as the one, I think that one was proposed as part of prior, our private way application. So, um, this does include a conceptual layout, which I'll let the applicant kind of walk you through that a little bit here. So this kind of lays out what they, they are proposing for cluster, which allows them to reduce, uh, the lot area by fifty percent. As well as to reduce road frontage by fifty percent as well. That enables them to avoid wetlands to the extent possible. And, um, and just gives more flexibility in terms of the lot layout than it would be the conventional, uh, layout. One of the issues that I've raised is the fact of the ordinance requiring, when you do a project like this, if they're a large abutting vacant parcels, there should be provision for future interconnection. Uh, and it does not require construction of a road connection, it just simply requires laying out the right of way. So that fifty, a hundred years from now, when the town builds up to the point where those connections are critically important for traffic and utility circulation and everything, the lights are there, and the campus is able to pursue that. Again, not something immediate, you'll leave with the ordinance, someone requires that that pavement street connection be made. So probably, most logically to the northwest and possibly to the southeast of Miami Abbey. They can land there, it could be provided with a pavement street interconnection. So as you discussed, John, at the beginning, the sketch plan is a formal discussion to look at these issues. And get the developer team and the planning board on the same verbatim page when it comes forward, so that everybody knows what to expect in terms of the review process. Uh, the next step would be the preliminary plan, where they're ready, uh, take this to the next stage of development and design. And provide the engineering, preliminary engineering of the roads, stormwater, everything, which is just conceptual at this point. And, uh, the board, within enough information to verify the board's judgment, that this project can meet the subdivision criteria and design standards. Uh, you can make that preliminary determination based on reviewing, uh, all of the information. You don't need to do findings of fact and conclusions of law at the preliminary stage. If you determine it can meet the subdivision standards, then you will give a preliminary approval, which is good for six months. Enabling the applicant to do the more hard line engineering, get a peer review done on that engineering work. If they need any state permits, uh, stormwater or wetland or others, they can go through that process, come back to you with all of the financial security documents in order, as well as the, um, legal documents for homeowners association and all of that. Legal work can be done as part of the final pling process. So that's pretty much where we are. And I would just point out, for example, the bank letter that was submitted, Norway Bank says they're good customers. Uh, that's not really a financial, uh, demonstration. What the ordinance looks for is an engineering estimate, peer review, and a letter of credit. Or other, um, indication from a financing company, when you've looked at the project, looked at the applicant. And based on those costs, they are willing to finance the project. So that a letter of commitment would be another instrument that would be bringing to, to meet that requirement. So, at this point, the board should do a quick look at the cluster layout. And in your judgment, determine whether or not it accomplishes the purposes laid out. I think it's six point thirty-three, which lays out the goals of cluster. It's not just to reduce lot sizes and road frontage, as potentially beneficial as that is. It really calls for some thought going into where are these lots going to be located? And can they take advantage of the open space that's created, even just for natural setting or for recreational purposes? Uh, and that's a discretion, discretionary, uh, decision of the board, to be convinced that the cluster plan is, gets the benefits that are called for in the ordinance. Uh, that if you determine that the, the plan is conducive to those, meeting those goals, and you can indicate the cluster approach is workable. Or if you just see that this doesn't really meet those objectives, you can, you can give a direction to the developer at this point, before they go forward with any more engineering, that they're gonna need to take a different design approach. So that's all part of the sketch plan review process.
And you made a comment, George, I think it would end with, part of the cluster is they can reduce the lot size, but they have to then turn the, you know, extra land into open space.
That's correct.
So it's not cramming in more lots than what.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, name, address, and relationship for the project.
Sure, my name is Matt Fellateer. Uh, I am the engineering consultant from Taraback Consultants, looking at applicants. Uh, five sixty-five Converse Street in Portland, uh, as well as New Gloucester. And I think you just said, we have, we're proposing a thirteen lot subdivision, uh, using the cluster development and the, as outlined in the zoning ordinance, and I'll just kind of go briefly through kind of the existing conditions, where we are on the property, and then talk about the actual development and what we're proposing. Uh, so the project site, uh, is on thirty-seven point eight eight acres of land. Uh, lot thirty-five, lot forty-two, the tax map two on the kind of, uh, derners and successors tax map, um, which also is pointed out, uh, lots to the southeast. Um, the site is located in the rural residential and agricultural zoning district. And the site currently right now is mostly forested. Uh, there are those two lots up there, as pointed out earlier, that have access to, uh, Pinkham Brook Road, uh, Blue Jay Way. And there's also a fifty-foot right-of-way access next to them, which allows to, we're working to be proposing a road, uh, for the development. Wetlands and streams are discovered on site through a wetland delineation that was performed by Eric Lima, Masswood Environmental. Uh, very well respected, well known, we use them a lot for our projects, it's, it's pretty good work. And you found no natural rawables on site, didn't find wetlands, uh, and streams, as I mentioned. And none of those wetlands were considered wetlands of special significance. You did find the micro pit, which is man-made, um, in the corner there, um.
In the corner where?
And so the north, right there.
That's good.
Yep. So that could be considered a veritable by D U P standards, but it's not significant, um, because man-made is disqualified. Significant verables, it doesn't have their twenty-five foot setback requirements that a significant veritable would get.
Sorry to interrupt you, I'm really sorry, is it this?
Yes, I don't, uh, so if you go just.
Right here?
Yeah, that, yeah, yeah. Yep.
Thank you.
Um, the topography, generally, that's the high point, so part of the lot, lot thirty-five, which is the one closest to the road, part of that slopes and drains toward the major roadway. And then the rest of the lot, which is lot forty-two, which is the back, drains towards those wetland and stream complexes that are down there. So it kind of splits two ways, most of the back lot drains to the southeast, and most of the, um, the rest of the lot that's going towards the road drains that way. Overhead electrical exists along Pinkham Brook Road, which is what we're tying to, and there are no, um, public water sewer infrastructure that we would tie to. Uh, could you be, uh, the next one for me, please? As stated before, that because proposing some of the property into thirteen lots with open spaces, it's a cluster subdivision. Eleven lots will be accessed along a proposed twenty-four hundred foot, layer foot road. Then it will end, then end in a hammerhead return access for fire and anyone else. And it will access through the existing fifty-foot right-of-way as shown on the plan here. Uh, the two lots that are existing will be subdivided out, um, they will, they will remain, but they'll still have access of Blue Jay Way. So we're not gonna touch Blue Jay Way at all. Uh, they'll abut the road, but they will have access, and all the utilities will remain through their existing, um, easement plates. The road will be designed to be private road standards, include ten-foot travel lanes with two-foot shoulders. And they can be curved or have, um, or, uh, ditches, depending on, storm, east or stormwater, which we haven't designed yet at this point. Uh, and it will follow section six point thirty-three for the cluster development alternative, as outlined in the ordinance, which, as stated before, um, allows a fifty percent reduction in the minimum lot size and road frontage. Uh, so for this district, uh, zoning district for the rural residential agricultural, uh, ninety thousand square feet is, is required for the minimum. Uh, and three hundred length feet of road frontage is also required. Uh, for this development, we are, have a minimum of fifty thousand square feet and an absolute minimum of a hundred seventy-two length feet of road frontage. And that's the absolute ba, back lot. Most of these have at least two hundred feet of frontage, uh, I've done a little bit more, but a hundred seventy-two is the, the, the very, um, low, little that we have. Remaining land will be dedicated in open space, which is about nineteen acres, um, so that's over the fifty percent required, um, adequate, a fifty percent required for a cluster subdivision. And it's designed in a way to avoid, um, wetlands and steep slopes as much as possible. As said, as stated before by the micro pit, there's some of those steep slopes. They've been slugged, six, I think I think it was six. Uh, over by the night, there are some steep slopes there, we're near that house, but we push it out, down right there. To try to make sure that they're outside of that, I think that is a provision of the cluster development of the ordinance, that you want them to have visible areas, so it's not, um, that place like that. We've also included, uh, buffer areas, so why you see some, some buffers on the back edges of the lots and some of the side lots, um, for trail purposes, providing some areas, um, some separation from abutting property owners to give it sort of more of an open field, uh, field. Um, that's kind of by design. And each lot will be served by, uh, will be served by private wells, individual subject systems, and you're going to electric. Um, the real work of the fire department, determine what kind of fire suppression that they would be looking for. And it will come, uh, in preliminary stages going forward. So as permitting goes, um, we have about one point, one point three three acres of a purpose area that we're proposing, which is the road. Um, as well as one point six six to two acres of new developed area, depending on how storm works out and how all the, uh, the.
These acres are inside the weapons, is that what you're telling us?
Uh, no, just in general, like, just the entire, the entire, the, mostly the road length.
I got you.
Yep. And we're also available also quickly a wetland crossing, which is, um, kind of, you can kind of see right in the middle of it, the other complex is. So there will be a wetland crossing, um, but that, those impacts are listed for three hundred feet, for, for three hundred square feet, uh, which makes it, um, exempt based on D permitting, so we won't require N R B A P V R for that. Uh, we will require army corps permitting, which is still a big part of it. We will require stormwater permit as well, based on the number of purpose area that we're proposing. And we'll also require any D O T entrance permit, uh, because that is a D O T control permit, so it will be required and an actual part of that as well.
Is site law required?
Site law is not required.
Okay.
So our stormwater permit will be, it goes P V R, stormwater, site law, so we're, we're ready to tell that. Stormwater will be managed, uh, through stormwater V M Ps, including buffers and structural B M Ps, um, and just to determine what, what worked for the site yet. And the T P L links, the buffers, the most, it's less invasive that way. But sometimes you need to do structural V M Ps to control flow of plane, um, so that we'll look into that as we start designing. So our plan is to meet all the D U P and T requirements, uh, for stormwater control and treatment. Homeowners Association will manage the, uh, open space, the stormwater management, the road, um, so that will be as part of the subdivision. Um, and as stated before, we, we do have a venture capacity there, which we typically do for these types of things, to show that we still have the capacity to build this, but there's obviously more engineering and costs that are going to do to get to that. That's all, that's all I have to say.
Okay, um, many board members, any questions or comments?
Yeah, uh, I'm sorry if you've covered some of this, uh, what's the timing, the proposed timing on this subdivision? Like construction and then, really construction.
Uh, I, I think, I think that everyone will kind of get this going, um, pretty soon, uh, I'll actually turn to, to the applicant, yeah.
As soon as this.
As soon as it approves.
Okay, okay. Um, so then, side of that is the army corps permit. So is your plan to submit soon, or have you already? Just, you did know the October fifteenth change.
Yes, so that, we do know that our corps, the October fifteenth change in the rules, require P C N for all of these web activities, which is a, just a different form.
Yeah.
Than they've done in the past, so we are aware of that. Uh, as soon as, you know, we kind of get the approval from here to fix up the plan, or fix the updates, we're just, we're gonna go right into the design. And we'll start doing the permitting, start kind of doing it in tandem to get this all submitted.
Okay, so realistically, we're looking at probably quarter one, right, for permitting, to finish that up?
Um, so.
I'm just trying to, try to understand, like, when this week?
Yeah, so, because we, if we submit D E P permitting, I mean, they've, they've been, they've been pretty backed up, um, they just, they, they just don't have the people anymore. We're submitting things, I, I don't know what the timing is, is it six months from, from right now?
Stormwater permit is supposed to take four and a half months of D E P, but it's been taking longer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, you know, with feedback from you all tonight, our plan is to move ahead with design and permitting as quickly as possible, so. So our applications would probably be going into DUP and Army Corps probably in October. And then, sorry, yeah.
I'm sorry, Louis, before you look at your name and address, please.
I'm Adrian Fine, also with Terradive Consultants.
Thank you.
So let's hear it.
Anything else?
Uh, no, I'll hold.
Brian?
You have a few thoughts. So if you look at the topo plan, it looks like there's a few areas where we exceed, the site exceeds 20% slope.
Yep.
And that wasn't accounted for in the summary of land that should be accounted for.
So I didn't see anything in the ordinance that specified the contiguous area of steep slopes. Usually we've seen two acres contiguous over 20%. Didn't say mention the shoreline zone, what those slopes were. But here, there's no, there's pockets like that near the micro pit. But that's not, that's a fraction of the area. So it's also guidance from the board on that because it wasn't specified how much steep slopes. Because I mean, you're always going to have, you're always going to have 20% here and there. But you must everyone take those out and that's not something you've seen in other towns. Maybe you say like a 10, you know, 100 square foot section. Usually it's a larger sloth that you can take out for the purpose of a residential area calculations.
So our ordinance says portions of a lot which are unsuitable for development in a natural state due to topographical drainage or subsurface conditions such as, but not limited to, slopes greater than 20%.
Yep.
And so there's a line there for slopes greater than 20%. And it looks like there are areas where slopes are greater than 20%.
Yeah.
I think that should be added to the calculation.
Okay, we're, we're happy to add that. We've actually looked at it internally, it doesn't affect our density. But I wanted some clarity on, because it did specify how many, how much slopes were you need because most areas look for two acres of contiguous 20%.
It doesn't specify, it just says tell us which parts of the property have slopes that are greater than 20% and subtract that from your calculation.
Okay.
Similarly, the ledge, that's the final area that was not calculated. I think that should be part of the calculation is unsuitable to build.
But then he gains on if there is in fact a small area that has a drop off, whether it's just because it's over 20% in a limited area, is that a concern to us of the fact the ordinance says it should be? That's, I don't have a preconceived answer on that.
I'm reading the ordinance.
Yep.
And the way I read it, it needs to be calculated in the unsuitable land area to be developed. If you look at, if you look at the list there, the upper left, like you've done a great job of listing everything that should be calculated and that's not there. There is, there is part, there are parts of the property that appear to be exceeding 20%. So I think it's comprehensive review of the entire site to show which parts are unsuitable.
Sure.
Does that answer your, your question?
Yeah, I think it does. Brian, you ever gonna do that?
Yes, we can do that. Usually it looks like I said, stated before, some, some towns are very specific on how much areas of 20% slopes should be taken out of the calculation. And there are some towns that don't specify. So we weren't sure what that specification was here for this meeting, which is why, which I'm really happy that we're doing like a sort of a, you know, like a table read or kind of figuring out what's, what we should include or what we should not include. Because we read it as in the past 28 years contiguous or, or in for example, has 100 feet for, you know, at least 1,000 square feet is considered steep slopes that you would take out of the residential area calculations. Because there's always going to be little pockets. So it's gonna, it's gonna be difficult to like get every little pocket on the, or I mean, we could get every little pocket, but is that not billable area? I mean, you could, you know, if you have a 10 square foot area of 20% slope, I mean, I would consider that not billable. That would be, so they could easily put a house on it. They could just, they were just kind of creative. So it's that way. They need to just create that and it would be a billable area. So that's why I wanted clarification.
Well, it's just justified.
Yep.
You know, if you come back and the total shows a depression and that's going to be graded out and there's no reason why it can't be done, I don't see a problem with that.
No, we don't specify, as you say, in other towns may, we don't. I think for a cluster subdivision, it's important to know all of the area that's on buildings and working that calculation as well.
Yeah.
If the CAD shows it, should be able to measure.
And I would also chime in that Matt did mention, we did look at the number of steep slopes and it just wasn't in the table because of the clarity question, but it doesn't change the density. We can still have 13 lots on the property.
I hear you.
Yeah, we can add it, yeah. We're having it.
Don't take our word for it, we're gonna see the numbers. Yeah, we can certainly do that.
Brian, anything else?
I have several comments. Is a, is a stream considered surface water, George?
Yes.
So again, there are streams on the property, three that I see from the, at least from the wetlands, not wetlands, that one of your consultants listed three streams in the property there and point them out. They're not quite shown accurately or they're not highlighted on this map. But there are three streams and I think that should also be listed if those are surface water streams.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, if I add something here, sorry, about that note, about the stream. So I do see at least one is noted here, right? And there's a setback.
So those are wetlands.
This one right here.
That's a setback.
Streams. Oh, this is the stream, okay.
And there's also a branch that comes out.
Okay, so they are noted here. These are the, the streams then here?
Nope, those, those are the wetlands and the stream.
The stream, if you look at it.
Can we look at the screen? This is the screen, I'll go from.
Yep, and then it comes down to the south, right?
It's real clear on the, can we go to the wetlands study?
Yeah.
They show, that's one, two and three.
Is there a stream associated with this wetland?
I think the righty one on the very corner tip, that little like 80-foot right-of-way. Nope, on the southern end, so the southwest end.
Of this, right through there?
Uh, nope, if you keep going up there, right, I think there's one, you know, it's up there. It looks like there's one that kind of like.
The, the varnold pool survey shows them more accurately.
A little more highlighted.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, but to Brian's point, it would be great to have it more highlighted on the map of where the streams are. The buffer within the buffer of the stream are potential stormwater VMPs. Those are okay to go in there.
Uh, so there's a 75-foot setback that's a part of the wetland.
Okay.
And that's usually okay as long as it's on a relevant special significance.
Okay.
You just can't impact or you would have to do a DUP if you did.
Okay.
If you're going, like we go close to the stream, which we're not, this one out here is outside of the setback.
Got it, yeah.
You'd need a NERPA permit to get closer to a not proposing.
Okay, okay, so nothing inside the stream setback, but yes, inside of the wetland, but they aren't significant.
They're not significant. And I believe that wetland setback, as defined in your ordinance, is that maybe that called wetland setback for, for lots, for both areas.
It's okay.
And when she says show them, we're not talking about redoing this.
Yeah. Just show them, show them a little better.
Well, we get to it.
My point is if streams are considered surface water, then again, that must be into the calculations or just to confirm with Matt.
Yes, absolutely.
Brian, one other thing, maybe a couple, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
In the future, the town is looking at some buffering standards in subdivisions. And we haven't really approached the topic yet internally. But I'm wondering if you may consider, or your applicant, your representative of the applicant may consider working with us and being maybe a model for buffering standards as it relates to the road and adjacent properties. Just something to think about if you're all interested in. Where, where, it's on our agenda to address in the next year. And this looks like a good project to possibly test that.
You know, we can certainly discuss, yeah, against the tenant.
Well, along Pickenbrook, you have thick trees. So I guess tying into that, the less you cut down, the happier the world is.
Yeah, that's true.
And just clarifying, the road that's going in there, if that comes in close proximity to a house on the abutting parcel, look at what the vegetative condition is if it's wide open, then that might call for buffering in the future. If it's all fully vegetated and there's no visual impact, then probably not. But the board will have under the draft agreements discretionary authority to look at the impact of the road on, on the abutting parcels existing at all.
Two things, that's one, that is also heavily wooded and we can't make you do it because it doesn't exist today, but I appreciate your offer to work with us.
Yeah, we'll certainly discuss. So we are showing buffering already in here, so you know, we already kind of.
Okay.
Michelle Harrison.
Oh, just like just a second. Will you recognize her?
Michelle Harrison, 321 Aron Powell, Durham. I think it's important, that was like jumping back here, we are buffering on all of the lots. I will say that I'm not a huge fan of the conservation subdivision plan, the way it exists today in Durham, because you know, from a, from a cost standpoint, to make this cost effective, we do this, but I like bigger lots and more trees. And so we would absolutely be engaged in looking at ways to add more buffering to future projects. But also, and I don't know Matt, you can tell me what lot number is this one right here? I'm a little lost, I can't see it.
And your relationship with the project?
Oh, sorry, owner, a partial owner on the project.
Okay.
So lot three, you'll also see that we have a pretty large space from the abutting neighbor's land there, because we've had conversations with him about that. So you know, and then along the backside, that's all the rectangle that's along all the back of the property, that's all land. I think that's all trees and buffered now anyhow. So it's actually a very private cluster subdivision, so. And then a lot of the reasons we did the buffering around the lots was to give people access to the open space without feeling like they were going on unskilled properties. Thank you.
You're welcome. Back to you.
All right.
Back to you. Brian?
The varnold pools study also indicated there was existing paths and trails along the within this property. It'd be nice to see where they are right now. Cluster subdivisions are specific, very specific. And it's important to see what some of the natural features out there exist. Whether or not we want to retain them is something.
I suspect we will do a site visit at some, when you're, when we can talk about that later, but that'll give us an opportunity to look at it.
Did we already go on the site? I'm sorry, sorry.
So fast. Do you yield to?
Did we go on the site?
No.
We didn't go on the site, okay. We just talked about it in the meeting. Yeah, okay. I actually do have a question.
We gotta go back to Brian. We gotta go to the other Brian.
All right, all right.
I don't have any questions right now, taking it all in.
Okay, second round. Juliette?
Uh, thank you. Any flooding, is the site flooding?
It is not.
It is not, okay. Any flooding concerns? I'm just curious about this crossing over the wet area, the wetland. Are you proposing culverts or maybe you're not into that design yet?
Not into that design.
Okay, okay.
But we'll have to take a look and see.
Yeah. I was trying to look at the topo, but it's hard to tell, you know, where that water is.
Well, I think it's got a whole design there.
And you're going to have to, yeah, do that, but that was a question, okay.
Our goal will be to have as least amount of impacts as possible.
Okay, but no flooding, no flood.
No flood.
Okay. And the resource protection, do we, is this, no resource protection on the site? Okay, great. Uh, let's see, I just had one more question. I think that's it, John.
Okay, I've got a couple. This is very minor, but when you fill out your application, you did not check the block that this is a cluster subdivision.
Oh, in the, in the PDF? I tried. But you really. I'll make sure I do that.
Those who were before that.
Before, before the PDF.
That's very minor. I could turn you down for that. I appreciate all the work of getting the wetlands information and all that stuff together. That was a very good job on that. George already covered my concern about tying into other neighborhoods. Because what I see happening in a couple of years, I've been here in Durham, is we're creating isolated little kingdoms and our kids are not going to be able to walk to go, they're gonna have to go out on Pickenbrook, which is not recommended to get to the, you know, somebody 150 feet away from on their bike. So please pick two good spots, make sure that fits in. And I think that was, those were my comments. A lot of good work went into this. Brian, you had it all too already, have I missed it? Okay, okay. Any other questions, comments? Are we, are we comfortable that what we've seen here is enough to recommend they go forward with the next prillum rate planning stage?
Which would start your next engineering stage, right? In the permitting, right? That's, yeah.
Yeah, we did run it and started all that.
Okay.
Obviously, yes.
I'm getting back to George's comment about whether or not this is a cluster subdivision. I just, again, I need to see the whole math there to determine whether or not this is a cluster. It seems a little spread out, I think, in the definition of what we want for a cluster development, but.
Yeah. I would disagree with that. I mean, I think, you know, the cluster to me doesn't mean bunch together. It means, you know, we're trying to preserve as much green space, open space as possible. I think they've done that given the wetlands in the middle, wetlands on the edges, varnold pools, so on and so forth. So I personally am comfortable with this being a cluster subdivision if, you know, the number is crunch, so.
Yeah, we'll make sure we get it updated and make sure we.
I think you've got land in there to, you know, you've got a bigger lot two, three and some other stuff that you could make it work to.
Not a sense of how much access and open space there is now.
Uh, right now, we're, we're at 50%, or just over.
50.1.
50.1.
So there's not a lot of.
No, but.
Well, we have 50. You'd have to design it, so you'd have to make the numbers work. We'll all pay us suck that egg.
We, we can, we can find some.
That is really close. Yeah, okay. I'm interested to see that.
Yeah, the numbers have to work.
One question, waivers. Any requests on your part for waivers?
No request for waivers.
Okay.
We good on everything else? So I don't think we need a vote, do we, George?
No.
Consensus is you just gotta make the numbers work.
Make some adjustments from your recommendations.
Take it a little bit.
I'll show the numbers.
But I do appreciate the fact that there's been a lot of work going on this. And you were right, the faster you get your permits in, the faster this project can move.
So you'll probably see a couple of months down the road, right?
This is kind of a process question. When do you typically do sidewalks? I know you said you were probably going to want one. Is that something you should schedule now before we come back? Or should it be? Or should it be?
Do we feel as though?
With the other meeting, or I don't know how that works.
We might want a more advanced.
Typically, when they file their planning board application, the first thing you're going to do is a completeness review, preliminary, excuse me, uh, then at that point, you're going to schedule a sidewalk.
Yeah, so the answer is after you've submitted the preliminary.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, once, and then when would a public hearing occur? With preliminary or just with final?
If they decide.
Or whatever, whatever I want to do, whatever. It pretty much is.
And if you, if the board votes to have a public hearing, you're not required to do that, then you would basically have to announce from that preliminary again.
Okay. So there's a whole bunch of people sitting there. Uh, you neighbors, are you all partners?
I'm a partner.
Did you have anything else to do tonight?
Yeah, we just wanted to see it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I think you've got your marching words?
Yep, I do.
And there will more than likely be a site visit and a public hearing at some point. So the more you deal with your neighbors in advance, then, uh, you know, it just saves all those questions when they come to the meeting. Okay, good work, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Another question.
And in the peanut gallery, you are friends of, or?
She's part of it too. That's real.
Investor.
Investor.
Is that Heather?
He's a investor. He's her.
Heather, I'm sorry, I did not recognize.
I was like, what, who's asking?
So, so, it's been like a month since I've seen you. Yet another senior moment, okay. Thanks, everybody. Good evening, have a good day. Okay, George, you have a word? So the TV's still on, so I can't say anything stupid. Yeah, hopefully they're quick, otherwise we'll be doing the sidewalk in like.
I know, I'm a voice turner.
There is, I go past that today. And the good news is their ditch in front of the project is finished and we end up having to work on it. There's a full load of trace there. I mean, it's dead, it's water going deep into that, I think fairly deep into the project, so.
George, you talked today, I thought that was, that would be, wow, that's a good ask. But it's on your team, okay.
Okay, George, what do you want to talk about next?
Codification.
Uh, do we want to go over your schedule right away, so we don't miss it? I think we got, we got at least an hour. The thing that Brian asked about, the strategic plan.
It's up to you, if you want to deal with that first, we could do that, or to talk about the codification.
I asked you codification, because you gotta make sure you get everything you need to get it going. Why don't you give us a quick update on?
I'm so sorry, can I say something?
Yes.
Um, it's back to the, um, okay, just, I think we need to do a site visit, because it's clustered.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not.
Yeah, I think, I think we all kind of agree on that.
No, I know, I know, well, I'm just saying it's not a, um, a subjective thing we have to do. Mandatory, yeah, just wondering.
Okay, well, we, I, we would all.
I know we wanted to, I just, just wanted to be there.
Thank you, that is good. Okay, so next meeting, or next meeting they show up, we'll schedule it.
Yeah.
Take the site.
No, no problem. George, you want to talk about codification?
Yeah, so we've been doing research since June on what we're calling minor policy issues. As you recall, the town has a contract with General Code, which is a digital code consultant that does 30-plus communities in Maine with their land use ordinances, zoning ordinances. So basically, they are in the process of taking the current land use ordinance and reworking it into their digitized format. They've also done in, with a title like editorial and legal review, looking through, scrubbing the ordinance for obvious errors in terms of outdated references to state statutes or incorrect references to state statutes. So they are not dealing with policy issues in this review process, but they hold open the opportunity for the town to discuss and insert into the codification process any policy changes with attached ordinance changes that you choose to, to put into their product, into their product at this time. So they have graciously agreed to give the town until the end of this calendar year to put in a set of additional draft amendments beyond the 139 limited, specific technical questions that are already answered for them, based on staff review, as directed by the select board. And so throughout this process, what we've done is pretty much presented that this is an opportunity for the planning board and the select board to address some of the issues that have been recurring, such as, just as one example, kept coming up in subdivisions about putting the waste bins out on main roads. So the ordinance currently doesn't speak to that issue of what they, any demonstration of what they're going to do with their waste control. So here's the opportunity to put that in. So I previously identified 14 issues, so we presented and reviewed seven of those in July. Those were ones that the board had discussed in the past in fairly good detail. Uh, and then in August, I brought in additional round of seven that board hadn't really discussed in the past. And you gave me some direction on drafting, based on basically an explanation of what the issues were. So I have completed draft amendments for 13 of the 14 issues. Uh, today, I finished up work on noise. And the only one that I have left to do to actually draft a set of amendments is the cannabis, the small marijuana exempt facilities. So that's the only one that I've got left to do. And I've taken like everything from the easy ones, which are, you know, changing the submission deadlines, the number of copies, uh, the proof of payment of taxes, additional requirement. So those sorts of things, there's like a bunch of those. Uh, probably the biggest policy ones would be the campground, which we talked about at length, campgrounds. And I took your recommendations, which is to look, turn over to the state, review of campgrounds. And just make sure that their regulations don't address all of the Durham issues, such as 400-foot setbacks from residences, 100-foot setbacks from property lines. Uh, so add on to and focus the planning board review on not the design of the roads and campsites, but look at the overall layout and impact on, potentially on the waters. So I have prepared drafts of those. The only one I've got left that you haven't seen is the cannabis. And so for the next meeting, hopefully, I can send out in advance all of the draft amendments. And I'm also going to be preparing for the public process, a summary explanation for the website that will try to communicate this very big mass of proposed, even though they're minor, there's a lot of them. It's a challenge to get that out to the public in a way that they can understand. But that's one of the things we do, that I do. And so hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have a package that'll include what's going to be put forward in the public participation process. Uh, and you can get a final review of that. And the other thing we should discuss tonight is to talk about what that process can look like in terms of special workshop meetings, public information meetings that we've done in the past. You know, where do you want to locate those, over at Eureka or over here, so it can be televised. We should really be starting that public input process now. And hopefully, by November, and the December meeting, take that public input, make any changes that are needed, and get those right after your December meeting to the select board in time for them to review them, and basically give a yea or nay to send it on to the codifier. And again, this is just to determine what is going to be put before the town meeting, as opposed to, nobody's going to vote on it in December. It's just a matter, is the planning board, the select board, other affected boards comfortable with where it is and putting it before voters? So that'll be kind of what we're going to try to accomplish between now and New Year's. The other thing specifically that I would say is that if we get public input about any one of these issues, that we get to say, you know, this is going to be pretty controversial. It is the waste, I don't know, whatever it is. If any of these during the public input process seem to not get a consensus or, you know, face real political blowback, then we could just pull that off the list and pass it on, like we've done with issues before, until after the codification step. The goal is to try to get as much of this done as possible. And if there are any snags, then let's just pull the snags out and deal with it at a future point. So that's kind of the goal. Now, there is one additional issue, there's a 15th one, that came about as a result of a fire chief contacting me and he's given me a letter saying that he wants to see the elimination of water cisterns as a fire protection water supply, because those are nightmares for them. Because the first issue is, is 30,000 gallons of water. Where does that 30,000 gallons come from? The fire department certainly isn't wanting to take, they have 2,000 gallon trucks, I think, or 1,000 or 2,000. They don't want to have to fill it initially. And then if they use it, they don't want to have to refill it.
By, like a full trucks.
Yeah, so, so, and he just, he just thinks they subject to cracks over time, frost and different things, and you leak potentially. So he thinks we should limit it to either fire ponds or sprinklers. So I'm going to put that in, into the mix, if you're okay with that.
Guys, I agree with the cistern elimination, I think that's wise. Um, but regarding fire ponds, what do we currently say about the water level and who's to maintain the water level?
Okay, so I drove up to Deer Creek Crossing today. I mean, this is drought conditions, and you cannot see the water intake, because there is water in pond. Now, it's down, it got probably pretty full in June, and it's down low. But as you will recall, we required them to submit an engineering now hydraulic analysis, hydrological analysis, showing that if you take all of the area that drains into it, uh, and you take the annual precipitation rates and factor in droughts, and they line the bottom with clay, which hasn't been done in the past in other ponds, because you didn't have any design standards. Um, and that was peer reviewed by Royal Palmer. And sure enough, notwithstanding the drought conditions, that's got quite a bit of water. Now, it doesn't probably have 120,000 gallons at this point, but there's, there's a fairly good water supply there for the fire department. So, uh, I'm not sure if that answers your question. The other issue is long-term maintenance of it. And with one of the fire chiefs concerned with them, especially some of the older subdivisions, where we weren't properly located, weren't properly designed, weren't properly administered, uh, there's been, you know, failure of, of fire ponds in subdivisions. But I don't think that's a problem of the concept, it's a problem of the execution. Uh, so I think Deer Creek Crossing is a good example of a well-built pond, properly designed, viewed by qualified people, and tested by the fire department. And it's, it's actually still operational, notwithstanding the severe drought we're in.
It's a life safety issue that I consider. Um, I just happened to walk by, um, one cushion road a couple of days ago.
Yeah.
And that one looked pretty old. And I just wanted to make sure that we cover ourselves.
Yeah.
For who's responsible, to make sure those water levels where they need to be.
You can, you can change the hydrology after it's built. You can control rainfall. Uh, what you can do is do the best you can from an engineering standpoint. And part of the reason that, that one has, there's like a foot of clay under it. And that holds the water in, so it doesn't infiltrate into the ground, so. But beyond that, I mean, nothing is waterproof.
What happens in the winter? When it's like, well, the freezing?
Well, part of it is the design of 120,000 gallons has what we call is like a calculation for, you know, it's called freeboard. So you want to make sure that the intake is not sitting right on the bottom where it gets flawed. So that has, they calculate that, and they calculate thickness of ice. And that takes away from the gallons, and they've got to make it big enough to accommodate the ice on top.
But then they just rush through it?
No, they have a dry hydrant. It goes down to the bottom, the water goes down to the bottom of the plane, and so pond, so it's, it's operational, no matter what the weather conditions are.
Well, but I think that's a good question, because even Deer Creek, which is working now 20, 30 years from now, could still though.
There is maintenance required, and that's specified in the homeowners association.
But who does it? I think that's a good question.
The homeowners are responsible for it, just like the road. And, you know, this is another issue. In the past, the town has not, it's basically said, hey, that's your problem. But the planning board under main law has to put in place the appropriate management for these private improvements. And the town has a responsibility to monitor and inspect and enforce.
Yeah, I mean, I, I will say that this, the town is responsible with 20, I'm not sure, I'm not saying get rid of fire ponds, but I think it's a very legitimate question, as they do still though.
Yes.
And then the town, who's going to go inspect it 30, 20 years from now, 30?
And all of these stormwater stuff that's been put in, those are required to be maintained by DEP rules.
Yeah.
The reality is, you know, we don't have stormwater inspection crews running my home. But the town should periodically do reviews of these things. And I know the fire department's going around and they monitor those ponds, and they test all those dry hydrants. If there's a problem, they should be, we have the tools for new subdivisions, because we have been starting to pay more attention to this stuff. And I've got the experience to help you do it, to set up the system that will work if the town, you know, expends the resources and exists.
And then that becomes a challenge. I mean, but the same with sprinklers, I mean, you know, who's, who's going to make sure that, it's like smoke alarms, you know? How many people have smoke alarms that just bad repeat, and they took it out and threw it away? Uh, I'm not sure there's a good, good solution, but it is, to, to your question, I don't know if it's a perfect. You know, you got Rob Tripp was, was taking charge of all that stuff and getting it done, but you don't know 30, 20, 30 years from now.
Right, it says, who's responsible, right? I mean, if it does get below the level that it should be, uh, you know, there's a homeowners association, they're supposed to maintain it. But in the event that there's not enough water sufficient to put out a fire, right? I'm going to make sure that we're covered.
And they just drive down the road. Unfortunately, that's the answer, but you just drive down the road to the next pond.
Well, you bring them a load of water, just to fill it in the interim, just to get the level up. I don't know what the right answer is, there is.
But I think that's part of what you're going to talk about here, you know, with fire ponds versus sprinklers. It sounds like systems should go away, and it sounds like they're going to do that. I got your email, thank you, if, if you want my opinion, I'm happy to sit on the meeting. But I do think that their staff's going to have a meeting to discuss this, but I assume that's chief and codes and Cal.
Already did, and the consensus is pull off on the larger issue of, you know, whether to give it to ponds and go with all sprinklers. Fire chief is concerned, because the state has just put a prohibition on sprinklers and associated apartment units. So he's concerned, they may pull that, and then he won't have anything. So he's saying, keep fire ponds for now, but get rid of cisterns.
Okay, it sounds like the answer is that whatever you get to it, I would strongly recommend that we, you have a builder developer on, weigh in on ponds and sprinklers. That's my only comment there. Okay.
George, the amendments that you mentioned that you were working on, when, um, are we going to review those again?
Yes, I'm going to prepare them, I've got them all ready. I can send them out within a week, if you want more time to review them, or we can just put them into the packet.
For next month?
For the next meeting.
Yeah, that's fine, for me.
Yeah, anyway, again, we've already talked about all of them.
Yeah.
So it's just a matter of Brian doing his due diligence.
I want to do my due diligence, too. Um, and then one other thing, if we do have comments, next meeting, it sounds like.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I was looking at some of the easy ones, I've got some questions on those. So bring those to the next meeting, right?
Now, I did include in this package because you all, I'm sure, wanted, wanted to discuss and look at, what are the hundred and thirty-nine changes?
That's what I was just talking about.
Okay, that's what you're talking about. Well, that's all we have is the response that I gave to them. They are then going to take those comments, I mean.
I guess I have.
If you have any questions on any one of them.
Yes.
Give those questions to me.
That's what I'm saying.
And that will give you the detailed information.
I just have a question like why we answered the way we did, I guess.
If you could email, if you could email those to me now.
Okay.
I can get responses to you and share them with everybody.
Okay.
Yeah, the more we can, the more we can get done now or get to George to get done.
Okay.
Because whenever I say we can get done, I'm really referring to George, that's the royal way. But the more we can get to them because the sooner, this is a big chunk of stuff. And when you go to give this to the town, no offense to them, but, you know, there's, there's a couple hundred pages of stuff.
So drinking out the fire.
It is, and they don't.
Speaking of, we're not sure. All right, I'll put that on my calendar to review, get you comments on the one hundred and thirty-nine.
If, if any of them that you have questions.
Okay.
And I guess we're gonna talk a little bit about strategy when, I think we have two more articles to look at, right? Did you wanna talk about home parks or part of this package?
Yeah, those were just part of the hundred and thirty-nine.
Okay.
Where that's set by state law, you do not have, we've had to make some modifications to accessory dwelling units. You cannot allow, require them to be in barn or over a garage. They have to be able to do a complete standalone A D U. You can view it with the town attorney and the E C B staff. So we're making that change because it's required by state law. Same thing for home parks.
So I understand it's a requirement.
Yeah.
So couldn't we say that it's preferred that you do this?
Just don't keep the little thing.
You don't wanna put that into an ordinance.
It's just, again, getting back to maintaining the role of character.
Yeah.
So even though it's, yeah, I think, I'm just wondering if there's a way to say we would encourage you to take this approach instead of.
It's not, it's not an ordinance if you do that. Just don't, yeah, you could put something on the website, please.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to make sure the ordinance does, you know, we do what we say in the minimum. I mean, not in the sense they can't go above that, whether it went maximum or whatever it's gonna be. But I think we have to have something very specific to say, well, we prefer you do this. I mean, I don't care, I'm just, you know, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna do the prefer, I'm gonna do the minimum, whatever it may be. So I think our code has to be very prescriptive, but basically says that's what you have to do. And if you're nice, you'll do, you know, they say it wherever. We really do think we need to say, these are the rules that you have to follow.
Yeah, I'd like to think that there are some homeowners that are respectful of the maintaining role of character. Would you wouldn't prefer to do something that maintains that rather than what's required? Is that for you to do?
Yeah, I mean, you can put that word out in town meetings and other things. But I think we have to say this is, this is the minimum we have to do, for lack of a better term. This is the minimum we have to do this. Because there's gonna be some of ours that are there. And we can build up the minimum standard or whatever. But I think the state and now apparently the federal government is just beginning to decree on this kind of stuff. I read somewhere today that the feds are not gonna do what Janet's or the governor's doing. And just say these, you know, we're gonna look at zoning laws and look at other things to help more housing. I mean, I don't think they, it's like a statement, I don't think that they give it, give it about role of character. So that's just, we've just had, I think we tried and lost, for lack of a better term, with accessory units. So that's my thought as we just do do that.
Well, so far, we still, no, actually, it's not clear. We're still trying to get clarification whether the L D eighteen twenty-nine eliminates the provision that we put in that says two acres per loan. That was gonna push it toward the accessories. But that may or may not have gone away with the release legislation.
When do we get clarification on that? I mean, some of that stuff kicks off to twenty twenty-seven.
Right.
Some of it doesn't.
That kicks off to twenty twenty-seven.
But there's other things that don't. And I, my feeling is, boy, if we, if we're able to do it now, just do it. But there are other things that are, that do in fact take effect now.
The only things that take effect now are that prohibition on sprinklers in accessory apartments and the fact that you cannot review the three units as a subdivision or a site point.
And that's in our changes.
And those indicators are effective soon.
And that's in our changes.
No, but.
Because now we require three of them to be reviewed, right?
As a subdivision.
As a subdivision, so we need to probably change that to our, so.
Yeah.
And then the other thing is, just that has, I think, taken effect is we all have to be trained in planning board stuff. But I think we all have the.
I don't know why that.
Yeah, it doesn't matter, did the same way, I just said it before.
Yeah.
So if you want to get the clerk, well, George, the clerk, your certificate or something that says I graduated, you can't, you kept it, I surprisingly did.
The thing I said to you, George?
Yeah.
That I say it too?
If you haven't.
There's also a freedom of access.
Yes, I didn't, I didn't say that.
I have records of me attending, I can't remember who I went with. But I don't know if I have the.
I don't know the states.
I wouldn't worry about it.
Okay.
Yep, I would just say I went October twenty eighteen or whatever, what was it?
I could go again, I actually wouldn't mind, it's been a long time, if I need to.
Yeah, there's probably, there's probably good things that, I mean, just some of these housing laws have changed since.
I hope they put all the housing stuff together. Like we have no directionals yet, so.
Yeah.
It's been changed since.
That's right.
Yeah, I'm worried about that, I'm thinking to the board.
So tiny homes, did I miss that? Did I, did I not see it? You know, right now we require taller square feet, state says, you know, four hundred square feet or whatever it is. There were some changes to the tiny home rules that we had never implemented. Or, you know, we've implemented because we have to, but never changed the ordinance.
Well, code officer right now accepts tiny homes as standard law in unusual law. What's gonna change is now have to allow homes as A D Us as well.
And that's in here, right? Did I say tiny homes somewhere?
Hundred and thirty-nine, isn't it hundred and thirty-nine?
Okay, I saw some, I saw the word tiny, so we're good then with the state rules?
I think so.
Okay, what else you wanna talk about before we get to the rest?
That was pretty much it. In terms of, here's the game plan and then one of the group, yeah, present to you for the October meeting, the final drafts for all of the amendments. And then we can lay out doing one or more public information meetings through.
So at the October, at the October meeting, we're gonna have to lay out some dates to be in October, November. Have to kind of figure out what size bites we wanna take on this. How many do we wanna do the hundred and thirty-nine all at once? Do we wanna do like we've done in the planning board where we've done, I don't know, seven or eight, seven or eight? We've done them in two or three bites? Like some say is, because that's the one where the public will be invited. So, you know, it's not a public, true public hearing, but it is one where we will take their comments. So it needs to be a small enough bite that we're prepared for and they can absorb. So we do a combination of an easy one, but easy one, two, three, and then.
I think probably you're looking at, again, I do not see the need to take the public through the hundred and thirty-nine questions. You know, do you support changing from select men to select board? So out of all of those, there might be ten or so that are even worth presenting. Most of those we've already put into the fourteen items. So I think you can focus in presentations on that and put this hundred and thirty-nine responses up on the website. And tell people they're there, if you have any questions, send them to the town planner.
Yeah, well, I was talking about the simple ones, I'm talking about like the change from two weeks to three weeks.
Yeah, yeah, those fourteen minor policies, including some of the relatively minor ones like should developers have to prove that they pay their taxes to get permits? We can put those in two groups of seven.
Yeah, just so that you got a couple really easy ones and then, you know, somebody could say, look, if you really care.
Two or three.
Yeah, whether it's fourteen days or twenty-one days, you don't care, so let's move on to the next one or even less discussion.
Probably half a dozen, they're gonna generate any real concern issues.
What does the town warrant look like on the hundred and thirty-nine?
We're gonna, what we're planning right now is to take these fifteen issues now with the cisterns, put those on a separate warrant article first.
Each one?
No, no, just the fifteen.
All together?
Yeah.
One, one more.
One, one art.
So it passes already.
One more article. Again, if any of those start to get wobbly.
Yeah.
Pull them off.
Okay.
Put all of those onto one more article. These are just minor adjustments in policy for clarity and for administrative purposes. Not major policy changes. Upper envelope, all fifteen and fifteen survived it.
Okay.
And then the second warrant article would be the big codification, which will just basically be, this is just purely technical administrative overhaul fixing of the ordinance since the digital framework. So if the first one fails, the overall codification still goes forward.
But if, if that fails, all of them fail? If the second one fails, all of the hundred and thirty-nine fails?
Correct. So it's, it will still be select men, it will still be code officer and code enforcement officer. You know, why would that not pass?
Oh, no, I.
I think what may not pass is like accessory apartments are in there.
But again, the state law, you don't have any choice.
I understand. But there was a lot of discussion about, you know, L D two thousand and twenty and stuff. You know, so I mean, those are the kind, I guess by point I'd really like to make it, we need to start the sales campaign as soon as possible. And by that, I mean, figure out a way to get, you know, here's a hundred and thirty-nine mandatory changes and how, you know, how we present that. And here are the fifteen minor policy changes.
Yeah.
To clean up concerns that some of you had, like, you know, a couple of weeks ago, there was a lot of, in, back and forth on, what is it, Facebook about twenty-foot wide roadway. Well, we've worked, worked on our own and say it should be sixteen. So, but that'll have a lot of discussion because there were thousands of, uh.
People complaining about.
Complaining about twenty feet. And so that's the kind of stuff that we'll just have to, you know, sort through a little bit.
I just wonder if we should make it, I hear you about posting the hundred and thirty-nine on the website and, you know, telling folks to go there versus talking about it in a meeting. I do wonder if we somehow can make that more visible. Just in case there are things here that are picked out, that people flag. Like say at the town meeting, someone flags something and it starts a whole thing and then all of a sudden, we're now looking at a hundred and thirty-nine, a hundred and thirty-eight items that could go through but don't because of one. Right, so I'm wondering if the more we talk about it and.
I just don't know how you can.
I know, I don't either, I'm just saying out loud, I wonder if there's something we could.
Well, I think we, when it comes time to presenting the hundred and thirty-nine, whatever, this, this stuff in the back of this, we cut out, we cut out all the select board, select men, all that other kind of stuff. And we get to the things that we think are going to be of concern to people. Like accessory units, like whatever may be in here.
I'm saying above and beyond the fifteen.
Yeah, I'm dissecting the hundred and thirty-nine into.
Yeah, we can pull out, we can pull out and we could even pull them over into the minor policies.
Yeah.
This is what the state says we have to do on mobile home parks. We could pull that out and put that ordinances in here in the packet.
Yeah.
Put that on the presentation too. Do you wanna do that?
Well.
I don't know, I would love to hear what you all think about that. Either we make it more noisy or we don't. If we don't, we have longer meetings.
Yeah, might it not depend upon, I guess I've expected lots of hoopla the last couple of meetings and never really emerged. You know, and we're talking about the town meeting where people were not.
Yeah.
In part because we, you, we, Kim, Kimberly Garno, got the word out over and over and talked about this is, we have to do this. L D two thousand and three, we have to do this, we have to do that. And those, and so I think if we put the sales campaign out there and somebody comes in, you know, you can organize resistance against, I mean, if you gotta do it, you gotta do it. And I think the townspeople are smart enough to say, I don't like it, but we're gonna do it.
Maybe it makes sense to pull out anything that has a policy. Whether you're forced to do it by the state or not, put that into this minor policy.
And just say, we have to do this.
Yeah.
What if breaking it out into what we have to do on a warrant from other items? Like, these are items we have to do. So even if you don't, even if you vote against it, we're still have to do it. But you voted against it and now only goes eight, failed.
Does it require a vote if you have to do it?
Yes.
Does the ordinance change?
Because that's what you end up with, is you end up with your ordinance says you're supposed to do one thing and state law says you can't.
Yeah.
And so then you end up in court being sued.
Then we can't, we can't just say, don't change it, you know? Much as we might like to, you can't just say, we have to do this and just change the ordinance and, and, you know.
And that raises another question, which I discussed with the town manager today. The town attorney part in this process. So given budget constraints, what we discussed today was taking out any of these that raise legal issues and sending a very identified about six, like the cannabis. Like changing the way you review non-conforming expansions. Any of those that kind of raise legal, you know, potential red flags, we should run those by her before we go through the public process.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I still.
I'm gonna do that.
Okay.
I think that's a great idea.
Well, I don't think we talk more about it next week, I don't know. We can keep talking about now, I know it's gonna leave.
Well, we can.
I, I think it's super important that we do plan out this.
Let me, let me go through the hundred and thirty-nine. I've already, if you go through here, you will see referred to planning board, referred to planning board. Okay, what I will do is if there's any others that are more than just select board, changing terminology, anything that somebody could consider a policy, I'll pull those out. And you can look at it the next time and decide, do we wanna keep them in the hundred and thirty-nine and do we wanna put them in the fifteen?
I think that's a good idea, George.
Okay?
When do we get the final, the final draft or the actual codification?
What we will do is once, yeah, I mean, they've got a hundred and thirty-nine responses. We're gonna give them another fifteen bigger ones. Then what they're gonna do, if those are in by the end of the year, they will put, create a draft of the new ordinance with everything in it, I think. Not sure if they're gonna keep it, probably try to keep it as two separate with their format, all of the proposed minor policies and with their format, the entire ordinance. So we're gonna have to work through those logistics because it's hard to keep them separate and have it be the same format, so I'll have to work with consultants on that.
And did we, did we talk to the select board about what, how they would like to receive these? They want big bundle, they wanna, you know what I'm saying?
The select board back when we get to the charter, they simply delegated to the planning board, putting this together for their consideration.
Okay, I can think of more, I think it'd be, is this a good time to go to the charter? I'm good with that.
Yeah. Let's see, like, what last comment on this codification stuff? If we're gonna separate stuff out that goes to the website for the public to comment on, I guess that we just want a legal opinion as to whether or not it's okay to do that instead of having it in an open public forum?
Well, there will be required before the town meeting, a formal public hearing.
Well, we're still gonna have public meetings on all of these. And I don't know how we do the hundred and thirty-nine, but, so we're still would have multiple public meetings to take a chunk of the minor policies. So kind of how we broke the minor policies out into, I forget what they were about, but, you know, there were seven, I guess, in the beginning. We might have a public meeting about those seven, then we have another public meeting about the other seven.
Yeah, right, I hear, I think what I understand is it will be, say, fourteen, twenty-one. Yeah, right, I, I hear, I think what I understand is it will be, say, fourteen, or twenty-one, republic. That we have a public forum to discuss.
Yep.
And then everything else goes to the website for people to comment on. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what I heard too.
I should make sure that legally, that's, that's accessible, without having.
Yeah, I don't know that we have to, George, I'm not sure we don't have a meeting where we somehow just say, these are the technical issues. And, you know, maybe that's a part of one of the other meetings, that, you know, that, one hundred, whatever you wanna call it, one hundred and thirty-nine, or one hundred and twenty-five, because we took some out or whatever it may be. And as part of it, where we're gonna, we're gonna talk about six or seven minor policy issues. We start that meeting, we're in that meeting with, look, there's also a whole bunch of minor changes. And, and we're not gonna go through those tonight, but examples are select board versus selectmen. Uh, I don't know whether the other ones, but, you know, you're welcome to go through those and get a comment on them or whatever. I don't think most, I think most people would accept the fact, they don't really wanna talk about, you know, a common missing, I mean, one of them was, we, we're missing a letter or a word or something. So, like, does that make sense? So we, we, we give them the opportunity to look at it and comment on it.
That's kind of what I was talking about too, is like, instead of just the website, I can talk about it, show it, and meeting all of them somehow.
We could give examples.
Yeah.
For the reasons.
Yeah, and just say, hey, look at all of the, all of them are on the website. Or they're over here, go take a look at it on a piece of paper, whatever you wanna do. But give them the op, we can say, well, we, you know, you had the opportunity, folks. Does it really, did you really not want that letter put back in there, or what, whatever it might be? But I, Brian, I agree with you. The more we can get out there, the better, because my fear is if we don't cover something in a public meeting, then there are people that are gonna sit there and insist that, you know, you hit it from there. You know, it's like the guy on Facebook who said, all of these taxes were raised in a backwood, backroom public meeting, or private meeting, you know, the good old boy, so.
Also, I mean, really, another big part of it is if we miss something, if we, you know, there's something someone brings up that we weren't considering, right? That's a big reason why we have these public information meetings, right?
Yeah, that's a, yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah.
Somebody may have a better way of doing it.
You know, I can see why, why select board is, it's not selectmen, you know, it just may be education. You know, why the change?
I don't think, I don't.
Or not the change, why just sticking with one over the other, maybe, I think it was a mix.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, um, those kinds of things, I think are not gonna hit people's brain.
No, no, but just explaining, right, just like, this is why.
Oh, yeah, I would even, I personally would even take time to explain the minority stuff.
Unless questions come up.
Yeah, somebody says, hey, you know, I don't believe in women in government, I wanna come back to selectmen, you know, give them their two seconds and move on. Okay, that's, that is my, so George, you have marching orders, instructions?
Just had to do, you wanna touch on that?
Yes? Brian, I'll turn to you.
Alright, thanks. Um, um, I'm not, I'm not sure what this, the reality is just a draft. Um, but regarding economic development, um, uh, you know, the comp plan lists, putting together a, uh, economic development committee. So I'm not sure if that should change to include that, I'm not sure where it's gonna go, if it's going to happen. Um, you know, it's a codification thing, I guess. But, um, also, could you, you go to the next slide, George? I didn't know that it was on here, at least try to be on the, with the follow-up.
Memo strategic vision.
Yeah.
Has key planning initiatives and.
This just explains those individual terms.
I just wanted some clarification on, so, right-hand column, the first bullet point, sand and gravel aquifers, potential semi-public water source, what is that? What does that mean?
Okay, so, uh, the town of North Yarmouth and town, and the town, city of Lisbon have, their public water supplies are from groundwater aquifers, sand and gravel aquifers. The one in Lisbon that is supporting the Springworks lettuce manufacturer, producer, that generates three hundred gallons per minute. And that just doesn't serve that, it serves a part, wide parts of town. So, one of the things to look at in, in exploring an economic development district in the south portion of Durham, where we've been talking about battery energy storage, solar, reason, all of the gravel pits in there is because of the sand and gravel aquifer. The sand and gravel contains the aquifer. Uh, so, that, depending on how much water is there, and how, you know, that's just a general mapping geological survey, uh, like, to test, testing to see, is there adequate water there to support some economic development? That's the idea of that.
Okay.
Can you, George, you and I have talked offline, I guess, about ideas to do in, in this area about, like Lisbon has the vertical plants and solar farms and, you know, battery storage, things that need water, uh, things where you've already torn up the land because of gravel pits. Um, could you, maybe you could do a better job explaining than I did? You had kind of a concept to discuss.
Well, we presented and we'll be exploring, there's two grant applications in right now for energy and for economic development for the area down where the, where the town considered, you know, contract zoning and, uh, battery energy storage is a major proposal to put a large, very large facility down in, uh, South Durham, under the power line. And that area has multiple gravel pits that would be optimum locations for solar farms as opposed to open fields. So the idea is to try to explore, whether the town can tap into some of that opportunity for economic development, either through gravel pits with solar farms in them, battery energy storage along the power line, uh, possibly tying those into some sort of agricultural production facilities. Uh, I did meet with representatives of the agricultural committee, and they expressed concern about that. Their concern is that that may or may not be a unfair competition to the existing organic growers in town. So we will need to work closely with them. But right now, the town has the opportunity to get, I think there's a twenty thousand dollar grant that we're looking at, we've applied for, and a seventy-five thousand dollar grant to begin to explore the concept of an agricultural and energy economic development district down in that area.
Specific to that area?
Yes.
Townwide?
Correct. Yep. And part of the reason this driving that here are some of these considerations. The gravel, sand and gravel aquifer, power lines, the gravel pits, the farm, active farm, farming, agricultural farming, commercial scale, all of those things are right there right now.
Well, that's why I said that's not gonna record, is saying, we have to be careful, there, there needs to be leadership and, and whoever does that, but, because there are gonna be a lot of people who are protecting their turf.
Yeah.
You know, so, they're not picking on, you know, the agricultural committee or anybody else. But if you write rules to protect existing, you don't get economic development, because you get what you got.
Well, it might tailor the form of economic development question, Chris.
If you do something different, but if you're protecting existing, that's not economic development. This is what I'm saying. If you, if you're, the agriculture committee is concerned that working on a new area is gonna be unfair competition to the existing, and that's a legitimate concern. But you need, we need to be able to work through that and say, but, you know, if we're, if we're gonna protect what exists, and we're gonna protect the only gas station in town, and, you know, that's not economic development, you don't let anybody else come in, is I guess what I'm saying.
Yeah, that is a concern.
Yeah, so we need the leadership townwide to say, look, we're gonna look at a whole bunch of stuff.
So in terms of the idea of having a larger townwide economic development committee, to look at other possibilities in which there aren't very many, because you do not have public water or sewer or market to support economic development, um, but even to take over and guide that whole process, if it, if it happens. Um, I did request a proposal from the Greater Department Council of Governments, who has an economic development division for a proposal to put into budget for a support, for a, an economic development committee. So that'll be part of the presentation on, on September twenty-third. But the reality is, we do not have the capacity to do another committee. So if the town wants to do that, some more additional resources are gonna have to put into it.
Well, these are good, this is a good time to be talking about that, because, and Brian, I appreciate you're going to the select board. Comp plan starts next year. Next year, yeah, back to strategic planning.
Back to.
With comp plan.
Brian, going to the support?
I'm sorry?
He said, thanks for going to the support.
Hey, well, you, you talked to the select board last meeting, Brian, huh?
Oh.
I'm sorry. You running against me? I'm sorry, okay, talk about that, go ahead.
Yeah, so, uh, at the, whatever the meeting was, July, late July, um, I basically offered to present this to the select board, and he said, yes, please do. You know, they were looking at talking to the various boards and commissions. Um, agriculture is looking at amendments. Conservation commission is doing an open space plan, you see at the bottom of the chart there. Uh, we have to do, respond to the LD eighteen twenty-nine, that's the housing one, working with you and I. Uh, codification is going forward, you're taking the lead on that, with the select board's support. Uh, I'm working with GBCOG to try and get these grants going for the economic development district in, uh, South Durham. As I said, Ag Committee, I think they call themselves, working with the main farmland trust, which is providing technical assistance for them, is working on agriculture. And then, uh, we, again, working with GBCOG. So, really, if you think about it, you know, this is the real core of the next comprehensive plan for the town. Because back in twenty eighteen, it was more, look, let's just look at, do we want the town to continue to be all rural? Or do we wanna have growth areas, like was in the earlier iteration of the plan? And the process ended up saying, no. There, there's no basis for doing growth areas in Durham, it's all rural. So that was kind of set the direction. And so now, this has got a really more focus within that. But in the town, could go in a completely different direction. People think, yeah, we wanna do smart growth, we wanna have built-up areas with public utilities, and we're willing to, you know, go through the process of raising capital to do it. Uh, we wanna be like one, so we could wanna be like these, uh, North Yarmouth, if you, probably good suburban models, North Yarmouth. They've got a real village center with compact development, commercial mixed in. They have a public water system to support it. Uh, maybe some people in Durham would like to see that here. But, we don't. So the next comprehensive plan, that would be one direction to go. The more realistic one is this one, which takes these things that are in motion right now, which really puts a framework in place for continuing the planning process for the rural continuation of the rural character and enhancing that in many, many ways. You know, space planning with agricultural planning, uh, with more, uh, housing planning, how does it all fit together? And then, put in budget into the next budget, money for the first phase of the comprehensive plan update, which should be done, ready for enacted by twenty twenty-nine, town meeting. Uh, and then phase two, so phase one would be the research, taking all of this stuff that we're doing on each year, putting that into the comprehensive plan phase one, doing the visioning process, where you do ask that, is this the way the town wants to continue? Or do you wanna move in a direction of North Yarmouth, for example? Uh, if, you know, depending on that visioning process, where people say, yeah, this is the best course for the town for the next twenty years, then you put that into phase two.
So on that note, that energy piece that we're just talking about, that right now, this next year, would be more of a getting into it, like reviewing it, researching it?
Yeah, what, what, if the town wants to see these things happen, solar farms, battery energy storage, for economic development purposes, and to use that energy to support, like, that's, is it, uh, is it farming operation from, I think they're a barber, John, you don't remember that, but, with valor, so they have some crops to feed. They have to do irrigation, you know, they're doing commercial crop production, they need irrigation. And that takes energy. They could tap into the lower-cost alternative energies from the solar farms and tap into the battery energy storage, so that, you know, if they were doing some kind of a facility, you know, greenhouses, they don't lose their crops and power outage.
But like, that would be, we're researching it now, it'll go into the comp plan for the public participation, visioning, and then see where that goes.
Yeah.
Right? That's what you're.
Because right now, the comprehensive plan doesn't mention solar, doesn't mention battery storage.
Right, right. Right, but of course, we, we do have contract zoning now, so we have, we have some things in place, we have the solar ordinance, but, but as far as what we talked about with our energy, we're in a research phase, you're in a research phase right now.
Right.
And then it'll feed into the comprehensive.
And what the town is that on solar, solar and battery to date has been reactionary.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we don't have any regulations. This is to say, okay, now let's look at, now that we've got the regulations and protections in place, what kind of, these types of activities should the town try to pursue?
And yeah, I was gonna say, the pursuit part is a piece of it, once, if you decide that what you're gonna do is what George discussed, an area for solar, an area for agriculture combined, and that's the way the town wants to go, you then have to pursue that, because I don't know how you do that with a consultant, with somebody who's, who wakes up every day saying, I gotta go find a battery storage thing, or I've gotta find some encouraged agricultural, whatever. Maybe it's not a person, it's a consultant or whatever it may be. But you have to, just the fact that we create an area, doesn't mean people are gonna come to it.
Right, and you, yeah, you do solar farms, right?
Yeah.
So, I mean, would you rather go to a town that, that has all the tools and is interested in seeing solar farms along the lines, as opposed to going to a town where you're gonna get hit with moratorium?
Of course.
Which is a better business for them. So that's what you do, you start marketing, you start going out and contacting.
You're visiting, that's right.
Yeah, that's what economic development is about.
Anything else?
Well, thank you for letting the, or entertaining the fact that I'm ending the agenda to talk about this, it's very helpful to hear.
We did have it on the agenda for last month.
Yeah, yeah, um, I appreciate that, and I appreciate, um, the backup, listening. But what, what I see is, after listening to you, George, is energy and economic development seem to coalesce. What's, what separates them?
Well, they do coalesce, and that's the whole idea of coordinating all of these together to go into the next comprehensive plan.
Why do you separate the bullets?
Because right now, they're just distinct projects.
Same thing.
You know, these are just distinct projects. Working with GBCOG, they've applied for an energy grant, that's that project. The, uh, agricultural committee is working with the main farmland trust on some amendments to clarify and update the definitions for agri tourism, that's, so that's a project that they're working on. We are now pursuing a grant for an economic development district. It's a separate project from the energy grant and from the agriculture. So that's why they're compartmentalized, because we're doing them as separate planning projects. But they're all part of, you see the connection between all of them? They're all part of this. And, and the other part of it, the reason to do this, is to delegate to who's gonna be responsible for doing it. If you put them all together, with no delegation, this, this helps effectively manage the process. That's why they're separate.
Could one exist above the other, go instantly?
Right, exactly.
I mean, I mean, to be, to be, to be real, energy is its own thing, right? Economic development is its own thing. I, all of these things are their own buckets, right?
But they're all, but they're all interconnected.
Yes, they are, but like, you don't need energy to have economic development, you don't need economic development to have, like, they're separate. Yes, they are, but like, you don't need energy to have economic development, you don't need economic development to have, like, they're separate. They are related, but you're saying these are all separate projects, which is why they're separate.
Yeah, and so you see, you see the title, Strategic Coordination of Durham Planning Projects.
But, but in general, you could look at just the, the topic and be like, "That is super important, right? We can focus on that, not just the project, but the title, right, open space."
And I think, I think that, you know, the top two up there, energy and agriculture, what George has discussed is, is an area or a package that says, "Our focus on economic development is going to be energy and agriculture." It's like the town west of Indianapolis, their focus was very big warehouses. I mean, they wouldn't talk to you unless, unless you're coming in with a million square foot warehouse. But that was their economic development. And so I think what George is saying is, hey, Durham could say, "Our focus is gonna be energy and agriculture."
It's up to the town.
Well, I understand.
Somebody could go. Brian, Brian, see, these were actually going completely, we hadn't, until this charter. This is pulling them together, it's not splitting them apart. The Conservation Commission has been looking at solar for three years now. You know, where's the best place in town to do solar? Completely isolated from the other considerations. Uh, agriculture, Farm Agriculture Committee has been independently discussing, trying to make the regulations in Durham fit modern agricultural practices. No discussion solar, no discussion of anything else. This is pulling them together to say, "Look, tie these into an economic development program."
Speaking of agricultural committee.
Yeah.
Do you think, are they planning to have something for presentation at the town hall? And should it not be included in the.
I communicated to those representatives where I presented this, the need to get their amendments to you for consideration. So that would be number sixteen.
Okay.
And there were some good ones too, I think, that are, are important for us.
They did present this of them to the select board.
But good questions, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, but something else to, to throw up. And then, uh, open space is not this year, right?
They are in the process of doing first year phase of.
First phase, oh.
Two-year project.
Yeah, so it'd be twenty-seven.
Yeah, which is perfect, right, to go into the comp plan. It's like perfect timing to add to the comp.
But it's not added to this year to work low for us, which is gonna be, so. Good, anything else? I'll take a motion to retire for the year.
I have a motion to retire for the year.
Second, it's been moved to second, any further discussion? If you're ready to get home, please raise your hand. And we are closed. Thanks, George, thanks to our honor.
Thank you very much.
And thanks to all of you. Because I no longer need my cycle lessons when I go home.
I know.
If you have a chair, put them on, get out of here.
Um, uh, George, September twenty-third, right, is the, uh, select board.
Economic development.
You're gonna present on that?
I'll be there participating.
Okay, and then October twenty-eighth is the.
Open space.
I think I sent you, uh, Roberta Brzezinski's email.
Yes.
But the week before, there's supposed to be a packet.
Sorry, George, what we're saying about that?
I said the week before, in that, when we're meeting, that they're gonna have a packet from their consultant. Maybe the, the Conservation Commission.
Starts at six-thirty, right, Benmore? Both of these meetings?
Smart now. Select board.
I'm sorry.
They also started.
Okay, everybody, have a good day.
Busy day, George's first day at school, this meeting, anniversary.
Happy anniversary. I spent my twenty-fifth anniversary today, West Dino, the comp plan meeting. I don't like about that.
My wife's very understanding.
I thought the twenty-fifth was a, was a bridge to fall.
Yeah.